We offer an opportunity for public comments on all the work session events. So if there's any public comments, we would accept those first.
Anyone who'd like to comment? Comments are limited. Comments are limited?
Yeah, Yuri Krasowski, 159 Quincy Street. I'm very interested this evening to sit and listen to the city administration try to convince the city council members and city taxpayers that they know what they are talking about regarding the financial amount needed to resolve in the collected, pothole-infested, old-packed streets which they themselves created in Manistee. This administration loves to blame the state of Michigan for reduced revenue and the economy for all of Manistee's issues. Well, it is time this administration stands up and accepts responsibility and accountability for its actions. Stabbling others when the city of Manistee itself changed the purpose of the oil and gas fund away from maintaining streets to items such as making the massive debt payments for the Ramstow and Marina, both city managed failures. Yet it is clearly time, the administration, to take responsibility, and I hope it starts tonight with the administration giving concise, consistent, and reconcilable data. So I will be very interested in what numbers the city manager, his staff, is going to throw out to discuss this evening. Hopefully, this is really a meeting to discuss the street issue and not two horns on what streets have been repaired in the past with funds given by the state of Michigan. Frankly, over the past seven months, seven months, this administration has thrown around so many numbers and stories their credibility is zero, and they have literally dragged down the city council to lowest level ever. Over the past seven months, we were told the city of Manistee had no money for streets. Then the administration told us the city bombed $148,000 for 12th Street. Next, they told us the city would need $1.5 million of new revenue for the next 10 years to repair 90 to 95 percent of the city's streets. Let me repeat, this administration stated that $1.5 million would be needed for the next 10 years. Later, the same administration talked about $650,000 to $658,000 was needed, and finally, referenced a tax increase of around $400,000. So everyone, including the city council, take your pick. This administration has thrown around numbers representing tax increases anywhere between 14 and 52 percent of the current city real and personal property tax today. I ask, each time a new number is thrown out, is there ever a reconciliation presented to the previous number discussed? Of course not. Personally, I hope that the administration has purchased a new dart that when, and that when they threw it at the board this time, they got the number right. There's also my hope that any number shown tonight is reconciled to the original $1.5 million which was stated that's needed for 90 to 95 percent of the streets. Don't just put a city map of the streets, show us exactly what streets the city is planning on repairing. Please be perfectly clear as to if the city is planning on addressing all of the city's streets or just expecting all of the taxpayers to support additional taxes just to maintain the major and already good roads and do nothing for the poor roads which exist as the city has done in the past. In short, I'm requesting the city administration to be straight with taxpayers. City manager, several months ago, you told me that if I thought the oil and gas funds should be used to repair the streets, I should ask that it be undeveloped for both of the citizens. I stand here tonight formally making that request in person so that it is documented on video. Obviously, I believe I must make this request publicly since any written communication from myself over the past several months as well as my requests for information have all been ignored. So once again, on behalf of all of the residents that can't afford higher taxes or are just plain tired of this administration, residents like Mr. Ray Cortier, who I applaud for his recent comments, I request that the use of the oil and gas fund, both the annual investment earnings as well as the principal balance, be put on the ballot this November for Manistee citizens and vote so our local streets, and I'll repeat, our local streets can be repaired. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for being here to sit here and talk about this update tonight. We have been working on this project for quite a while. We've had several updates of city council, and we'll follow up again tonight. The intent on tonight is to bring you up to speed as to where we're at and give some direction on council as to how we move forward with identifying appropriate revenue to upgrade our entire street network system. So, Sean? And we will, by the way, we will take the PowerPoint presentation and we will place that on the city website for other residents to see.
Good evening. Back in December of 2013, we presented a very extensive presentation on the asset management plan and the updates. We also discussed different treatment options and different funding options that might be available. At the March 4th city council meeting, city council added a strategy in the strategic plan that included developing a plan to increase revenue to address some of the street needs that we had. At the work session in March, staff also completed an update on the street process, and we included reviewing the asset management plan, benchmarking other communities in our region, but also on a statewide basis, and also provided some additional information on funding sources. A month later in April, staff recommended, or I'm sorry, staff provided another update on the street issues and recommended some, recommended steps as outlined in our asset management plan. We also discussed the minimum amount of money that was needed in order to show a meaningful improvement towards the street network as a whole, and we discussed all of the funding options that were available and what those limitations were and the impact of a possible headly override. At that point, staff directed staff into then start working on a plan on how to move forward. So while we were doing some of that research, Kathy Boyle came across this report from 1963, and I'll read you just the first page of it, or a portion of the first page. "Because of the lack of adequate funds for street improvement for several years, many of the main thoroughfares and residential streets of Manistee have deteriorated to rather poor conditions. If proper remedial action is not taken in the very near future, the unit cost of reconditioning will be much higher than it would be presently. It is recognized that capital costs of a complete street rehabilitation program at this time will be prohibitive even using federal assistance programs. For this reason, it is felt that a schedule must be set up to allow a portion of this work to be completed each year until the total program can be accomplished." I found it interesting that 50 years ago, the city was facing the same issues and has been facing the same issues since then. The streets are not at one time issued for us, they're an ongoing process that we need to keep investing in and keep improving. So tonight, we're going to go through the current status of where we're at. We've applied the asset management principles in our plan, and we've applied those to the overall street network. We've explored the 10-year plan as requested by city council. However, we're recommending an initial five-year plan, and then we recommend continuing that five-year plan on an annual basis so that it becomes a revolving five-year plan. And so then, on an annual basis, we look at what we've accomplished in the past year and then add a year to that five-year plan, so it's kind of a rolling, it's always looking forward. And this is really the creation of a transportation improvement plan. It's the same type of TIP that the state uses, counties use, and the federal government as well. This plan also anticipates funding provided by the potential headly override. So on an annual basis, as we collect our, our street data through the Pazer ratings and update our software, we go through steps one through six in the asset management process. When funds are available, then it's time to go to the last step, which is to identify, prioritize, and select projects.
So Spicer Group was brought on about, about this time to really focus on this prioritization and selection. And so, in the asset management plan outlines a lot of different criteria to get down to the specifics of identifying segments that need to be worked on. And so, just briefly, those are looking at the road base, analyzing what its condition is, so we can make some, you know, really thoughtful insight into whether roads should be replaced or not. We looked at traffic data, future water and sewer work was a very important one that we looked at, other known projects, we looked at the condition of curving gutter, some of the economic impacts of doing work, especially in commercial areas, spurs of projects in neighborhoods, how they're spread around the city, mobilization of contractors, it sounds like a small item, but it's really key in trying to get good costs and good bids on projects, getting the projects in a localized area and linear so they can be done really cost-effectively. Looked at safety issues, and then some just general engineering requirements. One of the first steps we did is we worked with, really worked with Ed and Jeff, looking at existing Roadsoft data. The city's been collecting data as you're aware for six, six years and have a good library of Pazer ratings. So we had a good sense of the street network, how it's been rated, how it's kind of trending through the deterioration. We also took all the data that's in Roadsoft and pulled that out and kind of pulled it into some, basically into spreadsheets or databases that we could also use to map or graph that data. We'll, we'll get to some of the mapping work we did a little bit here. But basically, it allowed us to graphically look at a lot of the data that's tucked away inside of Roadsoft. There's over 700 segments that are in the city, and all of those segments, when you look at them by numbers alone, it's kind of tricky to analyze, but when you can put it to something graphically, it's a little bit easier to, to deal with and understand them. Jeff and I drove all the streets, we went through the entire city, every single street in the city, and he kind of described, gave me a little sense of institutional knowledge and history. We evaluated the condition of the roads basically visually. And then when we were done with that, I also went and drove them again myself and looked a little bit more critically, took me a little longer to get through it, but I looked at every road, looked at its condition, looked at curving gutter, drainage issues along these streets, and kind of went through and evaluated those in addition to our additional drive-through. We looked closely at some of the water, the proposed water improvements through the city's water general plan that are proposed, and also we looked at, through the SSCE study, some of the proposed sanitary sewer improvements. And that was also very critical in our plan, as obviously, we don't want to be improving a road that has a water project until all the road, you know, five, six years from now. We also interviewed staff, worked with Jeff and interviewing staff, and that allowed us to really get a better institutional knowledge of some of the history of roadwork in the city, and also where some of these utility projects or utility project needs are. And so, we could identify whether storm drains issues and mark them on a map and kind of capture them in our GIS database. So in terms of identifying specific projects, some of the knowns we had going in, one is a, is a project that Jeff's been working out with MDOT, they've submitted for a grant, a small urban grant, and the intention on that is within the next couple of years, we'll be able to leverage on some MDOT dollars to do some work. So that's included in part of our plan because those are leveraged grant dollars we can utilize. We worked with Chief Bachman a little bit on public safety, generally looking just in terms of minor versus major versus arterial road and speeds and lane widths, but we also identified some of those critical points within the city where there's some safety concerns. As I mentioned earlier, we looked at grouping projects, and I'll show a couple, Jeff will go over a couple of maps, I'll kind of hit this home, but when you just look at the Pazer data, you look at the Roadsoft data, it doesn't really have any sense of where the projects are at, it just kind of spits out to you, here's what you need to reconstruct, rehab, and, and they're scattered across the city. So we had to spend some time to kind of pull these back into actual, you know, quote-unquote "projects" based on budgetary amounts of a given year and location. And we also looked at just how those projects lay across the entire city, you know, if they're spread out or be isolated in one area. Talk a little briefly about Roadsoft and how we kind of ran, used it in parallel with the work we were doing. I think you're very familiar with Roadsoft, with Ed and Jeff's presentations in the, in the past, but it's a, you know, it's a real good tool to use in looking at the entire system as a network. It kind of groups all the roads together, it doesn't isolate a given segment, and so you have to understand that limitation, and that's a little bit where I think our involvement was, is trying to boil that down to these individual streets and blocks. And it's, you know, it's a very useful tool, especially in terms of evaluating the past Pazer data as a, as a database, as a repository for it, and also for trying to project out how to spend funds and how to optimize those costs. And so, again, it'll look for the best way to spend dollars, most cost-effective way to do that, and you've heard this in the past too, and it kind of focuses a little bit on the rehabs, the light rehabs, the preventive maintenance, trying to extend the life of certain pavements, but it has a tendency to collect, you know, some of these reconstruct projects. And so, we had to keep that in mind, we were going through this, this balance between reconstruction and preventive maintenance. But it was a tool we was projecting. In, in Roadsoft, and really with some of the models we're running, we did have to have some unit pricing for the different work we were planning on doing, and there's a ton, there's a whole list of different methods we can use to treat the roads. We, we, what we elected to do was to kind of group them a little bit more into some different categories. So preventive maintenance, for example, would be your patching and crack sealing. Light rehab would be a seal, a seal coat or a thin overlay, or thin leg, I guess is the current term they've been using. Heavy rehabilitation would be looking at a milling of the road and then refilling it or a hot place like we've done in the past. We isolated heavy rehabilitation with storm sewer improvements, because there's certain areas where we needed storm sewer improvements, and they're, and those improvements are expensive, so they're worth separating out, so we isolated them. And then finally, we have reconstruction, which just like it states, is basically the removal of the existing road down to a sound base or sub-base, and then completely rebuild and reconstructing the road from ground back up. And again, we added in storm sewer as a separate component of that because of the added cost of storm sewer. One thing worth noting is these costs are higher than what's specifically listed in the asset management plan. In the asset management plan, they're, those are just construction costs. And so, we looked at project costs here, and included those project costs are some contingency, so we had room to, you know, work, we're planning out of ways in the future, and it's hard to predict what these projects will be like, especially with no data in front of us. So they have some of the engineering contingency administrative costs associated with the projects, so built-in significance.
One other point I'd like to make is that storm sewer is a function of the road network. So while sanitary sewer and water main are utility functions in our separate enterprise, storm sewer is really a component of the roadway system, and that's why those costs are included there. So like I mentioned earlier, we were tasked with coming up with a 10-year timeframe or a 10-year plan, and one of the, one of the limitations that Roadsoft has is it gives you the data for today, and it gives you the data for the years past, but it doesn't tell you what a street is going to look like individually in three years, in five years, and in 10 years. So we have, we have very, are very confident to look out one, two, and three years and be able to predict how a certain street is going to rate and what sort of treatments are going to be necessary. When you start getting out into years four and five, it's very difficult to know whether or not they're going to switch from a light rehab candidate to a heavy rehab candidate, or whether they fall off that scale and need to be reconstructed. And like the previous slide showed, the differences between a light rehabilitation and a heavy rehabilitation are $100,000 per lane width, five times the cost. So those are significant deterioration points. When you miss the opportunity to do heavy rehab and, and you have to enter into reconstructing that roadway, again, it's about four times, just under four times as much to, to do those treatments. So those are very significant, and that's why we, we had a much greater comfort level looking out five years and then, but then adjusting that on an annual basis. So another reason why that 10-year process is difficult is because some of these treatments haven't been done in the city of Manistee, some of the different paving methods, depending on the contractor, depending on the road base, depending on the traffic loads, they, they age and deteriorate at different rates. And also, we're not sure what, what state funding will look like as far as future grants, so we've only included in, like Sean mentioned, that first smaller urban grant. As we mentioned in the previous updates to council, we looked at $400,000 in new funding for the local street network, and we looked at really $150,000 of new money in the major street network, and that, as you recall, that would be a bond that falls off or that gets repaid, I believe it's this year or next year. So that funding would be available, and then we would be able to allocate $50,000 from future bond proceeds into the major street network, but most of that money would stay in the local streets. And again, this does not include any additional Act 51 money, which is our share of the gas taxes that comes from the state of Michigan. There's a lot of movement in the legislature, but it's uncertain, and so we weren't willing to predict that, project it out into the future. On the left, there's, there are two graphs, and the top portion of that here shows the major streets without any additional funding towards the street network. And you can see down at the bottom, we have several streets that are still in good condition according to the Pazer ratings. We have quite a few that are in the blue or the fair condition, and then we've got a about 25 to 30 percent that are in the poor condition. If we do nothing to those street segments, the goods become fair, the fares become poor, and the poor stay poor. And at the end of 10 years, 80 to 90 percent of the street network would be in that poor category. With the $2,000, $200,000 investment that we're discussing in this transportation improvement plan, you can see that in year 16, we have close to $900,000 of funding. That includes the $200,000 that we're talking about, it also includes the $375,000 of MDOT grant money that's anticipated. We've also are setting aside money in the upcoming fiscal budget and paying for some of the engineering costs for that project now so that we're prepared to have the matching funds for that project. And then also, the money that was provided in the Reith Riley Development Agreement that is a set amount of money, and it's tough to find a candidate that, that just will use that $100,000 or $140,000. And as you're aware, we've identified the section of 12th Street between Oak and Maple Street as a prime candidate and a high need for reconstruction, and the project that, if we go bigger than what that Reith Riley money is available, then we've got to come up with money out of pocket, and we also have issues to make sure that we're complying with the, our spending policy as well. So that becomes a very good candidate, and we're projecting that out in year 16, and then the years following that, how we're rated around the $200,000 mark. So what you see, how that $2,000 impacts the road network on the graph to the bottom right, is that we actually are able to improve the amount of good roads in the street network over the first five years, and we're really doing that by replacing some of the fair, fair roads with, with, or creating the fair roads, changing them into the good condition. And we're doing that because, as you're aware, Roadsoft and the asset management, I'm sorry, the asset management process really is about spending your money wisely, and it's keeping, keeping the lesser-cost treatments, spreading those out and using all the candidates for those. And so, you're keeping the good roads good, then you start working on the fair roads moving up in the good, and then when you've got money available, then you start taking the poor roads and rehabilitating those or reconstructing them and getting them up. So you can see over the first five years, there's, there's a positive impact at the top end of the scale, but we're still losing roads, it's not enough money to keep the poor roads from decreasing. And then the past, the last five years are just some assumptions on, on using what the Roadsoft has as an optimizer for that spending. When we look at the local streets, similar, similar graphs on the left-hand side, today there is no money left in, in the budgets after normal maintenance items for road rehabilitation. And so, if that trend continues, you will see that the green or the good roads that exist today, and those are the orphaned streets that we constructed with the Cedar Street project and we bonded for those projects, if they are not properly maintained, they will quickly slip off into the fair condition, and then all of our fair roads will turn to poor within that 10-year period. With the addition of $400,000 beginning in 2015, we can keep those good roads in good condition, we can begin to improve some of the fair roads and get them up into the good category, and, but it's still not enough to, to reduce the number of poor roads. As you remember, once the candidates are gone for the light rehab and the heavy rehabs, then we've got to spend more money on less road segments because those treatments are much more expensive, and so less miles of road are impacted. And then again, the five years, the second five years of that are just projected out with the Roadsoft optimizer. So when we look at, look at this as a transportation improvement plan or a TIP, the initial recommendations from Roadsoft, when we put them in, essentially says you should keep your good roads good. So you should do preventative maintenance items like crack sealing, you should do light rehabilitation on roads that, that are still at the top end of the scale but are ready to fall into the, the fair category. And when we look at all the candidates, and I'll show a map that, that indicates this, when we look at all the candidates that are available for that, it's all the roadwork that we've done in the past seven to 10 years. Roadways, pavement, pavement structures have about a 14-year life before they start to deteriorate and start cracking. Once the cracking starts, if you remember those deterioration curves, they start going down pretty fast. So if we want to keep those streets in good condition, we would need to spend money on those roads to keep them in good condition. Well, we've, we didn't, we think that that's very necessary, but we didn't propose that in the first year. We actually took the money in year one, get my cursor up here, in year 15, and we put more money into heavy rehab where we can do milling fills, and I'll show some pictures of examples of that, so that we have immediate impacts on that. And we played with the optimizer in Roadsoft, and we were able to tell if we don't do all those, those light rehabs in year one, but we do them in year two, how does that affect the overall network? And it has less impact. Do we think we need to, to spread this work around a little bit and then try to use economy as a scale whenever we can? So that first five years fully funds all of the candidates for crack sealing, for that preventive maintenance. And that ranges on an annual basis from between $10,000 a year to $40,000 a year overall on both of the street, both of the minor and major street networks. We also tried to look for segments of streets that were, you know, right at that cusp of going to the critical distress point where they're leaving the, the opportunity for us to do heavy rehab and going into reconstruction and trying to save those before we lose that, that opportunity. And then, excuse me, we are looking also to leverage utility funds, and as you're aware, we just adopted a new utility rate from the study that we completed, and that rate structure starts to provide capital for improvements to the, to the utilities about four to five years from now. And then we drop off some bonds in year six, and the money that are available in year six are about $750,000 towards utility capital improvements, and it jumps up to about $1.2 million for the years after that. So like Sean said, when we were looking at candidates, we looked at, we mapped out all of the utility, the future utility projects, and tried to stay away from those in the first three years. And then as we got some capital money available for utility projects, then we matched the roadwork with the utility work and started rehabbing those. So this map is, it's a little bit hard to, to read, and we've actually got a different image if you want to blow that up and explore it some more. But what this really shows is, is a map that is color-coded by those rehab techniques. And again, Pazers one through three or four are all in the, or one and two are in And again, Pazers one through three or four are all in the, or one and two are in reconstruction, two through four, or, I mean, you may want to say what the exact numbers are, but we grouped them, we grouped them into the four categories of preventative maintenance, light rehab, heavy rehab, and then reconstruction. And then we took, took a mean average of the treatment costs for each of those categories, and we used those to try to project out what the cost of the road segments would be. And so the first tool that we had was, once Spicer put all that data into the spreadsheets and databases and then extrapolated that into GIS, we were able to create maps that showed citywide what type of treatments are appropriate for each of those street segments. We then sat around and overlaid all the future utility work that would be done, and then began on an annual basis, looking through the available funds and the street segments that potentially could be completed.
Just one thing to add, with, with this particular map, it's just based on 2013 Pazer ratings. And so it's a snapshot in time. If you were able to go out and fix all your roads at once, this is what asset management would say you should do to your roads. And what's, we really want to point out is just kind of how discontinuous a lot of this work is. It's very spotty, there's places where you have rehab, reconstruction, and preventative maintenance literally right next to each other. And so it's, it's kind of a shotgun blast of these different, so that was just really our starting point to start working from. But it gives you a little picture of why it's so important to try and group these things together and start getting some continuity to projects.
This map, and again, the image is a little bit difficult to see, but what we did was identify all the candidates that did not have utility work in year one, year two, and year three. And this map identifies the type of treatment for the road segment by year, there was one other, I think there was one other paragraph.
No, that's basically the method of treatment and the years proposed.
So it does it citywide, and that's what the color coding is. And then we did another slide that would show, just blackening them all in, so that it would show what the overall impact would be citywide. So what, even though each one of those street segments gets some sort of different treatment, it all brings them up into the eight to 10 or the good range at the end of those treatments. And you'll notice that there are big pockets where there's not much road proposed, or much roadwork proposed in the first five years. The first one here is actually the Cedar Street sewer separation project where all the roads got reconstructed and we bonded for the local streets to be rebuilt at the same time. The circle here represents Jones Street, which the year before Cedar Street was all completely reconstructed. And then this entire area here and all of the heavy sewer separation work that progressed through 98, 99, and 2000, and a lot of those streets have held up pretty good and are still in the preventative maintenance category. This slide overlays those street segments that we're recommending for improvement in that first five-year transportation improvement plan, but the colors indicate needed utility work that needs, that has to follow this. So the blue represents upgrades to the water distribution system that have been identified. The green lines are areas where we need to improve the storm, storm sewer systems. And then the, what is it, brown, the brown lines are sanitary sewer work that's been anticipated from our sanitary sewer evaluation study, but also by talking with our maintenance crews on which sewers have problems consistently, where do we get called out, where do we have backups in basements and that sort of thing. So just to give you some examples of how, of what kind of street segment aren't eligible for the treatments, this is a snapshot of Greenwich. If you remember, about seven years ago, we did a hot-in-place process, and we put a three-quarter inch ultra-thin overlay on it. It's held up quite well, but after seven years, you can see that it's cracking. It has been cracked sealed a couple of years ago, but these cracks are still extending out. You can see them here. So this street is still a great candidate to just simply crack fill and extend the life out for another two to three years before another treatment is necessary. This is a section of Spruce Street, which was rebuilt in, I believe, 99. So this is a street that has been cracked, cracked sealed several times, and the pavement is starting to age and the cracks are starting to get beyond the point where crack sealing is cost-effective anymore. So this would take a light rehabilitation work. It's really putting another slurry seal, which is a very thin overlay over the top of it, so that all of the oils and the asphalt are protected from the UV rays. It's really the most critical thing. And I thought this picture was pretty unique. You can see that there's a perfect little square in the center here, and I believe that was done by the gas company where they had to repair, do a completed repair. They backfilled it, they patched it in just as they should. So when you don't, when you're not able to seal the water out from that little square, water hits into those cracks, it freezes, it thaws, it freezes, it thaws, and you can see how the cracks have, have radiated around that. And so each of those cracks continue to expand and expand, and that's the whole purpose of why we do the crack sealing is to keep that water out. Here's a, a street segment that would be a good candidate for heavy rehabilitation. This is actually rated, I think this street and, and another street have the same Pazer rating. So you've got to remember, Pazer rates them on a structural pavement basis, so it doesn't take into account necessarily the base, it's simply rating the pavement as a structure. This pavement through Roadsoft would be, normally be a candidate for reconstruction. But when we reviewed this, this street segment, we didn't see any indications of base failure. It's simply that the pavement is 30 to 35 years old and it's worn out. The oils have become brittle, and so they cannot contract and expand anymore. And when that happens, they crack and they turn into alligator, all, excuse me, alligator like this. So we believe that this would be a candidate for heavy rehab, where we could simply grind the surface off of this and put a new base, or put a new pavement on top of it and leave the base intact. This is a completely different-looking street, but it has a similar pavement rating, and we believe that's also a candidate for heavy rehabilitation. The base seems to be in good condition, the curb and gutter is intact, it may need some spot repairs, but this is a lot of what we've done with our, our small urban money, like when we did Cosiowsco Street, when we did Vine Street, and part of the truck row was mill and fill and then spot curb repairs. And because the base is in good condition, reconstruction isn't necessary, and there's no utility work here. This is actually Quincy Street, and Quincy Street, it doesn't show real well, but Quincy Street normally would be a good candidate for that heavy rehab, where we could grind the surface and, and put new pavement on it. But there are stormwater issues here where the majority of that roadway is higher than the sidewalks. And so this is not something that we want to do, is put water into those, into the yards, so this road is actually going to need to be lower. Also, we have a pretty consistent maintenance issue with the sanitary sewer there. We probably called up three to four times in the past year for blockages in the main. So this is one of those segments where we would like to rehab the sewer, correct the storm sewer work while the road is being reconstructed. So now we're going to let Ed describe a little bit about how we would pay for all of this.
So over the last several months, we've been talking about how do we fund the improvements to the, to the street network. As Jeff mentioned, there's a lot of talk in Lansing about increasing funding, anywhere from 400 million up to, I've seen as high as 1.5 billion. The legislature's working on that, they're trying to, trying to get that done before they leave for summer, but who knows if that will happen or not. But there's certainly a lot of momentum, and I think we will see some increase in funding, what form that will take and when that will get done, I'm not entirely sure. So we didn't include any of that in any of our projections, but we think that that's going to be, you know, it'll be a positive boost down the road. As we mentioned in our last presentation, we think the most likely or plausible candidate would be to go for a heavily override. That does a couple of things. One, it lets the voters decide whether they want to pay more to improve their street network. And it returns the city's millage rate to the amount originally authorized via charter. The city charter has a maximum of 20 mills, or what's called a 20-mill home rule city. That millage rate has been rolled back because of the heavily amendment to the Constitution repeatedly until it's down in the neighborhood of 17. And as you recall, for the budget that was just recently adopted, we did levy about .46 mills that we were below our heavily limit in order to fund the police officer position. So that will bring the millage that's being levied to about 17.7 for the upcoming budget year. If council were to direct, to pursue a heavily override, that would reinstate the, up to the 20-mill limit, and would provide for about 2.24 mills that could be designated for street improvements. And as we've mentioned before, that would generate about $395,000 for streets in year one. Another option that you could do would be to bond for some of this work upfront. That could be done, the bonding would let you finance any street improvements over a number of years. And it could be based on either a heavily override, which would be used to support a bond, or just a voted millage for a bond. We can't vote an ongoing repetitive millage, we can only vote a millage that's going to support a bond because we are a 20-mill home rule city. What that means is that we'd have to accelerate the work, it must be done in three years, we'd have to spend the bond proceeds. And quite frankly, it also puts the city more indebted. We have a fair amount of debt because of the state mandated sewer separation projects already. This is an example of how that, what a $4 million 10-year bond would do. And if you were to finance the work that way rather than doing Pago, you would pay about $900,000 in interest over that 10 years. And that 400, $4 million would fund five years' worth of work roughly. You'd probably pay roughly $30,000 in transaction fees. And the other thing that happens is if you do all this work in a lump, they all deteriorate roughly at the same rate. So you end up with streets that are deteriorating, and they, they end up turning to fair and then to poor a bunch of dollars at the same time if there's not money to maintain them. And we've seen that a little bit in some of the sewer separation districts, so a bunch of money gets poured in, fixes all the roads up, and then as a group, they're kind of aging at the same rate. So it's staff recommendation, if there's going to be some kind of a choice in funding, is that probably do it year by year with a heavily. And it just is a little bit more manageable that way as well. This graph here shows millage rates from 1995 to 2015. So it gives you a 20-year actual, and then I have a 2016 in there. Then you can see back in 97, our millage rates peaked at about 21.9 mills. Now, the combination of our operating millage, our refuse millage, and a voted millage for the aerial lift that the fire department uses. From the time period of about 97 through roughly 2005, we saw a steady decline primarily because we, as we were growing, as the city's tax base was growing, we were reducing the amount of millage that we had to levy for the aerial lift. But over that total timeframe, we exceeded 20 mills. Then in 2006, 2007, there was some impetus to try to lower the millage rate. I think that was part of the strategic plan, that was when Mayor Ford was on city council, and that was reduced over a two-year period to 18.45 total millage, which is where it remained until 2014. Then in this last, with this upcoming fiscal year, the last budget that was just adopted, that was increased the amount that we were below our heavily gap, again, about 24.65. If council were to want to pursue a heavily override, and if the voters approved that, that would add about 2.24 mills, and you can see where it would take the millage rate, it would take it up to about that 21.15, which certainly is higher than what we've had since 2006, 2007, but in line with what we had, you know, previous to that. So I just wanted to show that as an illustration of what that would do with the millage rate if a heavily override were to be approved by the voters. This is an example of ballot language for a heavily override. This was actually the city of Lathrop Village, which you might be familiar with, it's down in southeast Michigan, but actually surrounded by the city of Southfield entirely. The thing to keep in mind about any ballot language is if council decided that they wanted to pursue that, the city would have to work with the city attorney to develop language. And I've seen lots of examples of heavily overrides, and they're all a little bit different. So we'd want to come up with language that was clear and uninvading to the voter and, you know, and do it the right way. But this particular language basically says, try to let heavily override be adopted so that the limit on city taxes will be increased, in this case, 20 from approximately 16. They also are doing the refuse millage, which isn't something we'd be counting on. But I think the last sentence is important. If approved and levied, it's an area that's military, this millage would raise an estimated maximum amount of free money, $60,000 for the city in 2010. By allowing the city to levy the maximum mills previously approved by the voters and authorized with the city charter and state law, which have been reduced as required by the Michigan Constitution. There's a really good primer on heavily overrides that the MML puts out, which I'll send all the council members, they can take a look at. Before the heavily amendment to the Constitution, there used to be roll-ups of millage, so you used to be able to actually gain some millage depending on the economic conditions and also what happened with your tax base. But the heavily override did, or the heavily amendment did away with that. So the only thing you can do is continually reduce that millage. It's not automatic roll-ups, you have to have a vote to go back over the top of that. I just wanted to show you an example of what that ballot language would be. Just kind of to summarize, just some takeaways. So we've talked before, we have a, we have a fairly sophisticated asset management program that has been given a lot of work over in the last six to seven years. And because of all the utility work that we've done, and because of decisions council has made to invest a million dollars in orphaned local streets, and because of the first street reconstruction project which council decided to, to address, and all the street work, we have improved our streets. But as we mentioned, the high point in the street network was in 2012, and they're starting to deteriorate again because we haven't been able to maintain that level of investment. As we pointed out, our streets compare favorably with some of our previous communities, the data supports that. But our investment level, as I mentioned, is not sustainable without additional revenue. And that was, I think, part of the reason that that was adopted in the strategic plan is because that was recognized. As Jeff pointed out, the opportunity for preventative maintenance on our street network is large, but the time window is closing. As you, as the pavement ages, the treatments become more and more expensive. It was perfectly stated in that 1961 plan, 1963 plan, that when you reach those points and it becomes very expensive to continue to maintain them. And again, additional funding sources would be needed. What would the next steps be? We, obviously, the council direction on whether or, and or how to proceed. If council decided that they wanted to pursue a five-year transportation improvement plan as outlined, or as outlined with modifications, and decided that they wanted to try to fund that with the heavily override vote, then, then we could go to the city attorney, they would draft that ballot language probably by early July at the latest. That would be some, that would have to be approved by city council, probably in July. Then there'd be a public educational phase for a few months as to what this entails and what this means and what this means to the street network. I would go on a ballot in November. And if, if approved by the voters, if approved by council to go on the ballot and approved by the voters, the design of year one would probably take place in December, March of 2015, and construction year one would start in the summer of 2015. That's all I have, I don't know if there's any questions. We do have some of those maps that were shown before in a different format that you can zoom in on and be more readily accessible.
Some of those are harder to read, so if there's any that you would like to bring back up, we can bring those back up on the screens for you.
If you could just review, can you review them all, bring them back up?
Yeah, because there was one area, yeah.
Maybe in the enhanced format. Correct? So they're talking about.
Probably about six maps. Do you have one?
Yeah.
Who want one of the first one first? Which one do you have first?
The page of recommendations. Those loops up there. Let me, the camera.
Okay, this is the first map we have. So the key to this map shows, the green is light rehabilitation, street segments that are eligible. The blue indicates heavy rehabilitation segments, and the red are eligible for reconstruction.
Based on two thousand and thirteen Pacer data.
Based on the current Pacer data.
Only based on Pacer data, the only consideration they have is.
Do you know how many miles approximately are each, in each one of those categories, reconstruction, heavy, light, and preventive maintenance?
I could probably pull together pretty quick while we're looking.
Okay.
Now off the top of my head. It's important to note that that's what, that's what Pacer would recommend based on a segment-by-segment basis, which Jeff went over. And you can't do projects on a segment-by-segment basis. So that was why Jeff mentioned that was a starting point. And that is a known limitation of Roadsoft that the developers readily recognize. It's a tool, but it's not the end-all, the end-all person.
Here's an example. Fourth Street from US thirty-one to Maple Street is a candidate for reconstruction. But then all of a sudden, there's a block between Oak and Maple that just needs preventive maintenance. And then two blocks away, we're back into reconstruction. So there may be segments, or maybe this is a better example, Second Street, where we've got three blocks of reconstruction candidate. Then we've got a block that's actually held up better than the blocks around it, and then we go back into reconstruction. As opposed to doing a one-block segment of heavy rehab, this probably gets looped in with the five block or the four blocks around it for the same type of treatment. So Roadsoft optimizes. It's got algorithms that look for every single street opportunity, and it doesn't, it breaks them into segments. Every segment goes from intersection to intersection or a curve point in the road to a tangent point in the road. And there are six hundred and seventy-four of those segments that it is trying to optimize when it projects things out. So this was the first base map that we started with and started looking for, you know, the first way you spend the money through Roadsoft is you take care of the green lines. So you spend thirty thousand dollars per lane mile as opposed to going to the red where you're spending four hundred fifty thousand dollars per lane mile. So keep the good roads good. So we selected candidates that were out there, tried to group them in the three sections of town, but then also avoided areas where we knew that we had utility work that was necessary below them. And we just kept rolling year to year. Once you run out of the light rehab candidates, then you start spending money on heavy rehab or reconstruction. And then we also did the same thing, looking for candidates and opportunities.
Jeff, what is the blue line again, please?
The blue is the heavy rehab. So that would be streets where it appears the base is in decent condition, but we might be able to simply mill off the existing pavement and repave it with new Hoppix asphalt.
Wasn't from First Street or on Seventh Street, wasn't that redone? Why would we have to build a heavy rehab on that?
Again, it's based on the structural rating of that road. So we know that that segment was rebuilt in ninety-eight, I believe. So it's sixteen years old. We know that the base is in good condition, but there's some running that's occurring. The cracking is starting to get severe from the truck traffic. And so based on the Pacer analysis, it's saying that it needs, it needs another treatment.
But that comes under the major streets, doesn't it?
That particular segment is a major street.
That's right.
Yep.
Could you, Paige, could you go north on the map, please?
Sure.
A little bit more. A little bit more.
So according to this, you'd be doing light rehab out Arthur Street?
Arthur Street? We actually ignored that. When the maps were created, it included, the database that we have includes Pacer ratings for US thirty-one.
Okay.
So we didn't include US thirty-one in any of the treatment or budgeting that we.
But it just ended up showing it that way, okay?
But here's an example of one of the roads that we rebuilt in two thousand and ten, eleven. So it's the category eight project that we did. Without that funding, we also did Veterans Oak Road. You can see that those don't have those colors because they're still in good condition. There's still candidates for the preventive maintenance where we would just do the crack ceiling.
But we also did Washington Street all the way out, two thousand, two thousand and two, two thousand and three. So we're in that timeframe. We did Washington all the way from Fifth all the way out to Craig Fatline or close to.
Yep, and so this segment could, is a candidate for lighter, the light rehab, which would just be a resurfacing without any destruction to the roadway. But then there are several blocks that are ready to be ground off and repaved again. This also, the flip side of this is, and I can show it in a couple more maps, but this also has a four-inch water main that we had break three or four times this winter. We've got a valve broken, closed in a closed position. And it's pretty critical for fire flow in that area. So we're not projecting any, any road rehab to that particular street segment until we can fund the water improvements below there.
Jonathan, if you were to get previously done, how high are the places on those sections of road right there?
Yeah.
Explain some of that, is that what we should have done also?
Right, as I mentioned, when I said the first thing that Pacer recommended to do was street segments that we had impacted seven to ten years ago. So First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, and Fourth Avenue are prime examples of that. That's where we took the existing pavement, we heated it, we timed it or scarified it. We injected polymer modified asphalt into it, re-screated it down, and then laid three-quarter inches of new Hoppix asphalt on top of that. And most of it's holding up quite well. You'll see like on First Avenue, we have two blocks that are candidates for a light treatment, which would be like a slurry seal over the top of it. There's two blocks in the middle that just need crack filling at this point. And then there's one block that hasn't weirded as well, and it's a candidate for a heavier rehab. And then Second Avenue, again, almost weirders what First Avenue did. So that tells me that these sections between Fremont and Ford Street were probably built to the same techniques. They may have different base below them, so they're reacting different to the winters, reacting different to the traffic. And then Fifth Avenue is actually another road segment that you had done a mill and fill or what we would call a heavy rehab on around the same time you did Washington Street, but it's starting to age and is getting to the point where a cracked ceiling isn't enough and it needs to have more rehabilitation. However, again, the water mains under that section are only four-inch. They do not supply sufficient water flow for fires. And when the Chalet building was on fire, the department, being aware of where the hydrants are that can't provide enough water for the firefighting, went one block down to where there were larger water mains and they could extract the water enough to fight that fire. So again, that's a candidate for one of the rehabilitation for the water upgrades.
Now, I have a question. On some of the streets on the north, north of the river, I realize that there's a lot of drainage issues there. Are you going to be addressing those drainage, drainage issues as you're doing streets?
I have a different map to address that.
Which one? Yeah, is this one? Has utility too? The answer is yes. So these areas that have kind of the light green, on the computer, it's like green up on the screen, it was a little more vibrant. But yes, these are street segments that are, that need storm sewer work. And, but they don't need it for the entire segment necessarily. There may be, and understanding that all these estimates don't include any design work whatsoever.
Right.
So we know that we've got some flooding problems. We know that those are occurring because the catch basins that were linked straight to the sanitary sewer have been disconnected as per the requirements from DEQ. But now we've got ponding issues because those two-foot diameter catch basins don't have enough surface area to, for the water to be absorbed into the soil. So we've identified all of those as areas where we need to do some sort of storm sewer work. And it shows up a little better on your screen, I think, than what I can see. But you can see like First Avenue and Second Avenue have a darker line above and below it. So we're actually anticipating doing some storm sewer work in conjunction with the street rehab work.
This is what I wanted to bring up. Have you looked at the permeable surface? The permeable surfacing that is being used? That allows for more percolation of water and all down into instead of having just hard surfaces.
Right. There are applications for that. It's a, and Sean can speak to it in detail, but it's a higher cost. We haven't looked at it specifically, and we're not to that level of.
Yeah, well, because that's what I was wondering is if you're going to be doing sewer work along with street work, then possibly it wouldn't be a higher cost if you could avoid having to do the sewer work.
And when you're going through the design processes, that's where the engineering, where you evaluate the different treatments, you analyze the different costs, and then make decisions what's best today and then into the future.
I think just to comment on that, there was a, last, a month ago, they had the first green infrastructure conference at DEQ put on. And I would say one of the things that's probably happened in the last five to ten years regarding all these technologies of infiltrating stormwater and green infrastructure is there's been, quite honestly, a lot of guinea pigs across the state. And then through this, they've learned what doesn't work. Suppliers are learning things, and I think there is opportunity that are comparable in cost out there to look at. It's definitely case by case. There's also potential for grant funding, not point source funding.
Yeah, because that's what I was looking at, you know, when you go earth friendly, green, whatever, you usually can find extra funding, so. Thank you.
Councilman Harco, I just ran those numbers real quick. Based on the Pacer twenty thirteen ratings, I'll just give you kind of round numbers. Both combining minor and major streets, there's about eleven miles of heavy rehabilitation, about ten miles of light rehabilitation. There's six miles of what we call normal maintenance. That's not, we're doing anything, that's a street sweeping. Those would be your nine and ten Pacer ratings. And that's not crack ceilings. And then there's about another ten miles of preventive maintenance, being your crack ceiling, and then about ten or eleven miles reconstruct. Again, based solely on the twenty thirteen Pacer ratings. And when we evaluated, Jeff and I, there were places where they call, the Pacer ratings called the reconstruct. We think you have favorable base conditions where you could probably save some money and use and do a heavy rehab of. And we have to evaluate those case by case, like the design.
Right.
You know, of the green infrastructure, but probably take some cores, verify the base. But those are just, those give you at least a rough idea of that general distribution based on Pacer rating.
Thank you. Yeah, we're not basing everything solely on the Pacer. I mean, it's one, one of the ten factors that we use to come up with a candidate list.
Could you go through some of the other maps?
Any other questions on this particular map?
There are a number of French drains on the north side too, aren't there?
All the green ones.
Is that the whole green one?
Yeah. The.
All the green area.
Okay, that's all French green. There are, there's, yeah, and what, a lot of the French drains were simply existing catch basins that were disconnected from the sanitary sewer, and the bottoms were removed. And so you've got a two-foot diameter area where the soil meets the water, and that can absorb. If those got replaced by a standard leach basin now, where they're six foot in diameter, they may be six to twelve feet deep. It exposes, you know, multiples more surface area between water and the soil and also provides a larger storage capacity. So storm sewer rehab doesn't mean we have to build pipelines necessarily. There may be lower-cost treatments that we can do because the north side is all sand. When we get up in the Jefferson School District, up in that area, there's all clay. Even up around in this area is all clay. Those are not options there.
It's worth noting, all this work we've done in GIS, we have a lot of different layers. So if there's certain maps that would be more helpful to council, we can probably produce those if there's something that you're interested in.
Is there anything that shows where the worst flooding, or gaff, or pooling, ponding, whatever?
Well, I think that's really isolated on the north side, on the First, Second, Third, those avenues.
Not so much on south of the river?
The question is, Jeff, do we have the worst ponding and flooding? Where does that occur?
The, there are two areas that are pretty bad. The north side of the avenues, but then also up along Vine Street at the top of the hill, up around Grant, Fifteenth Street. Same scenario, so there were catch basins that were connected to the sanitary, they got disconnected.
It's probably the topography in the rest of the town. They're like forces the water to flow pretty quickly to it. So this is the basic map, absolute utilities for.
This, this shows the first five-year conceptual tip for the transportation improvement plan. It includes a hundred and eighty of the six hundred and seventy-four street segments, or about twenty-eight percent of the street network, would be brought up to the eight to ten Pacer rating. So they would all be brought up in the good. And it represents about three and a half million dollars of spending to do that.
But it does not include utilities, any of our utility projects or stuff?
In year, in year four and five, there is a couple hundred thousand dollars each year of utility work that's available. And so in year four and five, it starts to leverage that. An example of that is Jackson Street in Van Buren. And this segment here is a little segment of Jefferson Street that's actually gravel right now, in centers. And so what rose this segment high on the list and made it to our map, just as an example, is this is where Olson Lumber Company is. So it located between Harrison and Van Buren, and then also between Van Buren and Jackson. And right now, we have two-inch mains and four-inch water mains. And so it is the highest concern on the fire department's list because it's got the highest fire load in the city with the lowest water pressure volumes in the city. So as soon as we had utility money available for capital projects, we included upgrading the water main here and then leveraged the potential street funding to then pay for the road work. And then right above it is Quincy Street, which is the same thing, and I discussed that. We've got storm sewer issues there, so we've got to have enough funding in the road network to be able to pay for the road reconstruction, but also the storm sewer work. But then we also have to have some utility money to rehab the sewer work. And I'll be honest with you, we don't know exactly what the extent of that sewer work is. So we've made some estimates and set aside money, you know, as an allocation block to be able to do that. As, as we, as we are hopefully funded, or we anticipate being funded for the Saw Grant, we will be. we will be able to televise and do condition surveys on all of the sanitary sewer that's older than 20 years. So stuff like that, we will be able to know. We will be able to use that as another tool in making our predictions in the future.
Is there any additional information or any additional maps that would be helpful for us to bring back up to council? I think that gives you the, you could just kind of shrink that one down a little bit, Jeff, so I can see the whole kind of community as a whole, even though they won't be able to reach streets. I think that gives you the general perception. And then what Jeff said that I think is really important is that identifies about 28% of our overall street network. Has that right there? And the first five years of the enhanced funding for a little over $3 million of enhancements included to our overall street network system. So my guess what we're looking at tonight is answering any questions council may have and getting a direction from council as to what do they believe is the best course of action for administration to move forward towards.
If you're interested, I can, I've got the ability in our office at the Public Works to plot out those maps and we can make a copy available here at City Hall or for you individually as well.
That would be helpful.
Well, we obviously need to do something and we don't have the kind of money that we need to do a roads within our budget. And we need to come up with a plan that's long-term and that's something that's short-term. My feeling is that we, and we would be able to fund this is through a millage, even though nobody likes that idea. I'm inclined to start putting that plan together that you proposed, that we take it to the public.
I concur. It's never an easy thing to do, but.
I need to look around other communities. They're all in the same well, looking at millage to address their role.
The $200,000, $400,000 graph? That map shows one picture, the, no, the, I'm wrong, Jeff. But these show, this is, these are the true numbers. And again, this is part of the optimizer and these aren't perfect because it's optimized with funds, but it really gives you a good snapshot from what Eric Kenny just said. The option do nothing results in the bottom left-hand graph, the investing additional $400,000. And I think what's really important here is that even if investing $400,000 into our local road system for a 10-year period of time, we're improving the overall road system, but it's not as if that is going to address every single poor road in the city of Man estate. It's simply not enough revenue and funds to do so. But absent doing that, the graph to the left is even more telling.
Are we going to have a committee of some citizens and some council members to go over these? You know, if we're going to go after a millage, we have to have some input from at least some of the citizens who are going to be paying for this. And I'm not saying get eight or nine or 10 citizens, but at least have some input from.
I think that's open for council discussion on how to move forward. I think we absolutely have to involve presentations, involve the citizenry. I think trying to involve the citizens, just selecting the roads that we were going to do, in all honesty, I think that really should be locked up the professionals, the people that, the engineers.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but we have to do something with the citizens.
I agree completely.
Honestly, it has to be, as you said, educational formatting, having meetings, inviting the public so they can ask questions if they don't have an understanding.
Are you almost looking at maybe an ad hoc citizens, ad hoc committee? Councilor Horco, something like that nature?
Yes.
I think we'd be better with education.
At least get some info, well, the professionals can be here, but at least get, get some of the citizens involved, you know? Maybe they have some ideas too. Like I said, if we're going to go for a millage, we've got to get, we've got to get them involved. Yeah, see what they got to say. I totally agree with you, Bobby.
Say that again?
I totally agree with Mr. Horco.
And that's what the educational.
Last we'll be sending it back a year or two.
No, no, it won't.
Would you do that?
It's not going to send it back a year or two.
How would you, what would be your recommendation?
We had talked.
Bring up the timeline again, that timeline of.
Varian?
Yeah, it was towards the beginning.
It's at Varian.
July, October, November?
Yeah, I think it was July and October because we have meetings.
Yep, right there.
So involve the citizen aspect through July through October timeframe, is that okay?
That's the public educational thing. Isn't that what you're, isn't that what you're talking about?
We could still have that, but I, I still think we should have some, have an ad hoc committee and get some input from four or five citizens, you know, from different districts.
When, when is the last date to have council approval for the language? It says here, July 14. I mean, July. Can you, can you actually move that into August or when does that have to be prepared? When's the final date? Because that, because that's going to dictate the public input.
Councilmember Cody, I can ask City Clerk Michelle Wright that question. I know the deadline has already passed for the August ballot, so you need to get it out pretty early. I think more so than a strict statutory deadline, having this approved at the last possible moment, is getting it approved if that's the direction the council wants to go in so that there's plenty of time to educate the public. So that's what was kind of in the back of the mind in drafting that preliminary timeline. But we can give you the drop dead date, I just have to check with City Clerk Michelle
Earlier in the presentation, who was mentioned that we would have roughly $150,000 starting in?
2015, I believe, is when that bond comes off. That was for the, 2015.
Okay.
For the River Street streetscape.
Okay. All right. And how does that affect if we even go for a millage increase?
It was part of the overall $600,000. It was part of the 150,000 dollars with an additional $50,000 was being added to address our major streets. So it was part of the $150,000 roll-off, was part of the overall $600,000 investment in the total road network system.
As we proposed it in, in the budget that takes, takes effect, or July 1st, we have earmarked that money towards matching money towards MDOT funds for major street rehab because it's bound as P4 out of the major street fund. So if there's additional mon, funds available, we would, we would add to them and use that to leverage whatever we can, whatever we can get.
So Councilman Cody and Horco would like establishment of a.
Go get that one.
In Gussby. An ad hoc, getting some kind of an ad hoc citizen involved into this process.
And what would, I guess, what would be the purpose? I mean, what would be the end result?
You're going to have a, you can approve the ballot language before you even have the public education phase. Just approving the ballot issue isn't, the language isn't going to affect the public education. You can get that taken, taken care of. But I, there are people in each district, and I'm not saying have seven people, but there are people in each district that can at least, you can at least educate them and they can educate other people in their district. Look at how many people I heard tonight for, for this year. You know, you can have a public educational phase and have nobody here.
And then everybody sign up?
So, I'm still trying to understand what your vision of the ad hoc.
Give them a chance to have some input on this, on our road rehabilitation. And they can go back, they can go out and, and do some, you know.
Input towards what? The financial?
The millage, basically, the millage. Let's face it, we need a millage. That's the only way we're going to fund.
We need to approve it.
We need the people to approve it. So let's get some, let's get some citizens involved in it, excited about it.
They could be our most important allies.
That's right.
If we, if we choose.
So you're looking for.
The goal of land and to get voted down, where are you then?
You're looking for ad hoc committee that we can educate, to help educate others.
Educate other people.
Not what I'm saying to you.
If you're of interest, if you're in support.
Yeah. How would, how would we probably do with approval for a city, whether you appoint that particular city? So how would we want to appoint those particular citizens?
Volunteer.
I've got one, pardon me, hold on, I don't.
Well, can we do it like we do for other boards and commissions? Just make an advertisement and?
Say no more than three or four?
It'd be a short-term, not, you know, like long-term, somebody willing to serve on this commission from, till November.
How about we, we can do that, but ultimately, I think it needs to be council's decision as to who serves on that committee or not. I think that would be the appropriate way for that is, is that we would do that and then council would select those individuals to serve on that committee.
Or if the council member has somebody in mind that would like to serve on the committee, you know, no more than three or four?
Will they, I would suggest they throw that form and then we have a recommended file.
That's fine.
I'll have Michelle do that tomorrow. This is fair to say that everyone is in support of moving forward with drafting ballot language?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 It scares me. It scares me that we're going to ask for an increase. Is it going to chase anybody out of town? Is it going to chase people out of town? It might. But on the downside, the other side of the coin, the roads need to be repaired. Let's put it in the hands of the city residents.
Okay, so we'll start working on ballot language. We will, we will post for the ad hoc committee, try and get some citizens to sign up for that, put it on Facebook, do some other things of that nature. We'll bring all of those, put a deadline on that. I'll probably put that pretty quickly, the deadline, you know, folks who are interested. So if you know all folks, you know, please feel free to let them know in advance of that. Council will select those individuals to serve on that committee. It'll be basically a July through November-ish, if you will, probably late October in all actuality, July through late October involvement and working with administration staff and the public on this particular project.
One other question, and Mr. Toulson rubs us up about the gas and oil fund. The antros found that, is that a possibility to use?
If council wants to direct those remaining funds to be used towards that, it can. The oil and gas fund currently, as Mr. Bradlin speaks directly to, is approximately 70% committed for the next several years. But there are some remaining funds above and beyond the 70%, which council will have discretion as to where to put those funds.
Just like to make a couple comments on the oil and gas fund, perhaps clear up on this reception. Originally, when the mineral rights for the city were tapped and production started and there wasn't any charter protection, administration and councils back then set that money aside and they were being used for streets. Then there was charter protection that was provided to those funds. But there was no, no thing on whether it would be usable, but they had been used for streets. But then, actually, the next change in the use of the oil and gas fund proceeds didn't happen with the establishment of the capital improvement fund. It happened back in the mid-'90s when we had three large sewer separation projects and council pledged the earnings of the oil and gas fund to support those pond payments. So that change didn't happen within the last five years when the city started giving it for capital improvements. It happened back in the mid-'90s. What happened was, as we moved into the 2000s, we started to get the water and sewer fund to be more self-sufficient and remove the need for that subsidy from the oil and gas fund. So what that, what that money was doing was, was basically paying for some improvements in the street network that were above and beyond what was going to be done as part of the water and sewer sewer separations. And it paid over $6 million for that and those bonds were being paid by the water and sewer fund. So as, as we've increased rates to address the need to get the water and sewer fund to be self-sufficient, then it freed up that money to be used for other capital improvements. And council has used those for a variety of purposes. The question is, could some of that be used in streets when some of those obligations are removed? And the answer is yes. There was $50,000 this year that could have been put into the street network if council had chosen to do that. So in future years, that excess portion can be looked at for the street there. There was a suggestion made tonight that perhaps that should go in front of the ballot, go on the ballot and be asked to cap that funds. My professional opinion is that that would be a short-sighted decision because this fund, the reason it was protected back when it was by the borders of the city was to benefit future generations. If that protection had not been, or I can stand here pretty confidently and say that fund wouldn't have been spent many times over and wouldn't be here today. And because of the way we were able to invest that fund now, it is going to pay dividends for future generations and it's fairly, it's going to provide a fairly stable source of income because of the fact that we have some smoothing with a three-year spending goal and because of the fact that our timing and the entry into the market was opportune. But again, that's a council choice and it's, ultimately could be a voter choice if that was to go on the ballot. But it was set up and protected back when it was for a reason and that reason is no less valid today than it was then.
Do you have any questions? Hey, Quillen?
Hey, thank you very much for your time this evening. And if anyone wants, as Jeff offered, if anyone would like some of the larger maps, you think folks are going to want to stop by and talk about it? I think we can provide you some of those. Large, large maps, we were taking, we were breaking.